I'm quaking as we speak.
Good evening, everybody, to the joint meeting of the Planning Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission. We will start it off with a pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, and we have a, just as some opening comments before we get into roll call, you'll notice there's a couple of planning commissioners who are absent. We have one planning commissioner who is joining us via phone, Chairman Rick Hernandez, who's on the phone. So you may see me get a couple of text messages throughout the night. Rick is going to be messaging me if he has burning issues that he needs to decide, so I'm not necessarily checking the election results in Alabama or anything like that.
(laughing).
And then, and then our other commissioners, this is an informational item tonight, so for the commissioners who aren't here, I know one commissioner did submit comments, but there'll be ample opportunities for other commissioners to submit comments, either post this meeting or to the council. So with that, we can move into roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner De Man is absent this evening. Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Evans, also absent. Commissioner and Vice Chair Holt?
Here.
And Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
Thank you. And Danielle?
Commissioner Bassett?
Here.
Commissioner Eisen?
Here.
Commissioner Roddy?
Here.
Chair Alls House?
Here.
And absent is Commissioner Ramirez.
Okay, so with that, we're going to open it up for public comment. Public comments for any comments of a general nature that aren't on the agenda tonight. So I don't have any speaker cards before me. Anybody wishing to speak, please. Okay? I see nobody's wishing to speak on items not on the agenda tonight. So with that, close the, close, close the public comment period, and we'll move into the public hearing item. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jill.
Thank you. We are very happy to be here tonight to present the draft Parks Master Plan to the Planning Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission. We thank both Commissions for coming into a joint session format. We find it to be very productive and it's very informative to staff in particular. You notice we have quite a few staff people here tonight. There's been a lot of people working on this. Matthew Chittister is our deputy city manager, Daniel Sanderson, our senior management analyst, who are here in support of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Scott Phillips, our associate planner, has been the staff project manager for the Parks Master Plan. And Mindy Craig, the principal with Blue Point Planning, is here to present the draft plan to you. And without further ado, we'll jump right in.
Good evening. Thank you very much. So, nice to see you all again. We have progressed, since we last saw you, obviously, to our final draft plan. And so tonight, I'm going to present a quick overview of sort of where we've been, and then dive more into the recommendations, some of the priorities, and next steps, and really focus on that area, because that's the one that you haven't had as much time to discuss, and you may have some comments on that. See if I can get those. There we go. Okay, so just as a reminder, the Parks Master Plan is focusing just on city parks, and that's different than looking at the beaches. It's not necessarily looking at all the open spaces. It really is a focus on city parks. We do talk about the other areas as well, because of course, they are part of a really vibrant network, but the city parks is the focus. It builds on the planned Half Moon Bay and all the outreach and all the work that went into that project. We then took that and built upon it, both from the community input as well as the guiding principles. And we've been updating and refining that. And one thing we are trying to do is continue to coordinate with the bike and pedestrian master plan. They're a little bit behind us, but we will be talking to each other, if you will, within those plans and in implementation. Certainly, there will be some crosswalks. So one of the most important things that we did here was determining what the need is, because before you can do anything, you need to know what you need. So we did an extensive amount of community input. We looked at all the parks you have here in the community. We compared those to other parks and systems in the area. We did a community profile. Who are you today, and where do we expect you to go in the future, demographics, so forth. We looked at trends throughout the community, the region, as well as nationally, to inform us of new ideas. We looked at accessibility. This is a really important one for you guys in Half Moon Bay, not just from a handicap accessibility, but can you get to a park from your house? Can you walk to one? And we know that Highway One is a big element that came out time and time again about making it inaccessible for many of you in parts of Half Moon Bay. So that was a really important thing. And last, but not least, was the acres per resident. We wanted to make sure that that works with your development community and that we were aligned with what happened there. So for our outreach, we clearly have done several sessions with the Parks and Recreation Commission. We've done, this is our second with the joint committee with the Parks and Recreation. We did one with the City Council. We also did online surveys. We did a lot of stakeholder interviews, one-on-one with people in the community. We did a number of small group meetings with special interests, everything from sports to community groups and senior groups. We did a community workshop in some open houses. And then we also have a website that's in English and in Spanish, that we have been posting all the materials, and also it's combined with the bikes and ped, so people could have cross-reference one another. And from all of this, we came out with a couple of key issues and needs, and I'm not going to go in depth here. If anybody has any questions on it, please interrupt me, and I can dig in. But we had some issues around size and usability of parks. That's a concern on a lot of places, that it just couldn't handle all the capacity, all the needs that we need for every single sports, or every single use. That we have some limited sports fields, especially for soccer, informal soccer fields. We have good on baseball, and the community seems to be happy there, but soccer practice was a problem. Homeless issues in certain areas, especially like Carter Memorial Park, where there's not a lot of eyes on the park, were some concerns in some areas like that. Environmental constraints is one of the big challenges. It's an opportunity in some ways, because there's all these beautiful environmental elements that we can pull on, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the park. But we also recognize there's wetlands. A lot of places, they are species and habitats, especially when we start looking at new sites for new parks. We need to be very concerned about that. Maintenance was the number one issue over and over again when we talked to community members. We need to make sure we maintain our parks first, was the thing I heard all the time, before we start anything new. So maintain, maintain, and get our operations, budgets up to par. Recreational programming, it was just started anew in Half Moon Bay this summer. That's a great new opportunity. It was lacking, and I think it's now, again, a positive, that you'll be able to do some programming in these parks and make them more activated. And the Half Moon Bay Islands was a comment that a community member made about some of those communities on the east side of Highway One. They have nice green area around them, but no real parks, and so they felt like islands in getting to the rest of the community. We have a lot of needs for amenities, bathrooms, like the maintenance bathrooms, maybe even the other side. We got a lot of requests, bathrooms in all the areas to help them be more useful. More middle school and teen activities, so, and also amenities for children, and growing space for facilities for older populations. And generally, this idea of, we want to have our parks, we have limited bounds of parks, we have limited land, so how can we make our parks intergenerational and multiple activities, so everyone is welcomed and can use them in a really robust way. So that was definitely some of the issues and the needs that were identified. So, vision, goals, and guidelines. I want to go over this. This is a really important thing, because even after looking at the minutia of every single park, we want the vision, goals, and guidelines to continue to be these principles that help you think about whatever you do around parks for the years to come. So if this isn't updated for another 25 years, it's these items, the goals and your guidelines, that will hopefully inform and direct what you do and how you do it, because we can't conceive of all the potential changes and alternatives that are going to happen over the next 20 years. So you need some sort of a framework to make good decisions, and these are what they're meant for. So our vision is that the city of Half Moon Bay will transform its park system into a network of well-designed and well-maintained parks, supporting residents and visitors of all ages and abilities. So really expanding that, but knowing that we want that to be well-designed and well-maintained is sort of central, and that it's a transformation in creating a park system. So several different elements are in that idea. So, our goals. There's four key goals, and you, when you look at the plan, you'll see these go throughout. We hinge a lot of conversation around these goals, and so if you have a chance to read them in the plan, I would. I'm only going to highlight them here. First one is enhancing quality of life and community character. You guys are a unique, beautiful location. We want to make sure that the parks reflect that and enhance that. So, Half Moon Bay Parks will reflect the city's unique character and support a vibrant, community-centered place. Support environmental sustainability and conservation. Over time, Half Moon Bay Parks will be models of environmental sustainability and conservation, demonstrating best practices in sustainable landscape, energy, and design practices. So we want those parks not just only to be sensitive to the habitat, but then to be models for B R students, our youth, visitors, and so forth. Be connected and accessible. Half Moon Bay will provide a connected and accessible network of parks for residents and visitors. This, again, is where we really will connect with the B PAC. Balance economics and feasibility. So we want to ensure that the park system is economically sustainable, serving the community as well as visitors effectively. And this is, again, where maintenance and operations comes into play. We want to make sure we're not building a Taj Mahal, and then we cannot maintain it. So we have to keep that balance in place as we make decisions going forward. So, plan guidelines. Again, there's a lot of details here, and we've written under each one of these items some narrative about what it means. But under enhancing quality and life, of life and community character, sensitive and place-based design. So that means that we don't want a giant red block when, next to the ocean, if that's just completely out of place, you know? How do you think about place and make designs that look and feel like they belong, and that they feel and look like this community? So that's a very important element. One thing we heard a lot of is this idea of art, culture, and history. So we want to make sure that when people redesign or create new parks, that we're able to incorporate those elements throughout. And it might be in design, it might be in programs, and other elements. We also heard we want to have a welcoming place, Half Moon Bay, both for residents and for visitors. We want it to be welcoming, and so we want gathering places where you can all come together, just like when you do at the farmer's market here. So where can you do that, and can you have parks that help to make that happen? Supporting health and wellness. Parks are there for you to enjoy community, but also to be well, and we want to make sure that that happens. And this seems a little bit out of place, but sustainable access for dogs and horses. Dogs are pretty much a strong population base here in Half Moon Bay, so we can't forget them, and we need to make sure that we address their needs, as well as the horses, and how they're used, and how do they impact, and then maybe mitigate those issues. So those are really important. Under environmental sustainability and conservation, fostering environmental stewardship, and this includes programs, it includes policies around what you should do to make sure your parks are environmentally sustainable, and then also in your practices of how do you build a park, making sure that the landscapes are drought-tolerant, native plants, we're using sensitive water, energy mechanisms. We're doing all of the things that are appropriate for best practices around environmental sustainability. So, connected and accessible, clearly, we want to strengthen those connections. So where we can make walking and biking more effective, we want to do that. But also visual, there's places, Johnson House, we'll talk a little bit about this. How do you get to a park? How do you walk around that park? It doesn't happen on a lot of the smaller ones, but on a place like Johnson, how do you actually navigate yourself through that, so you can experience it to its best way? And then improving access for people of all ages and all abilities. So we have something called universal design is one of the guidelines that we're talking about. So when you develop a park, it's not just about having a handicap ramp. It's about thinking about how anybody would use it, somebody with a stroller, somebody with a walker, somebody with crutches, somebody who just is going to be moving slowly, or needs different needs. How do we make them all accessible for all ages and all abilities? And then finally, the economic balance and feasibility. So maintaining and enhancing our existing parks, that's got to be our number one issue across the board, very important. Supporting economic health, development, and visitors. So one of the things we all know is that parks are very much an economic development driver for places like this. It supports a very robust economy. So how do your parks get designed and created so that they are enhancing that? And amenities like bathrooms seem pretty simple, but they're really important, as are all the art and culture elements that we can incorporate there. And finally, encouraging and managing partnerships. You have an amazing network here in Half Moon Bay of working with the schools, the Boys and Girls Club, the regional parks providers, the state parks, and maintaining those and enhancing them, so that they continue to do good work, and that you can maybe find new ways of working with them in the future. It's a really critical piece. Okay, so, any questions on that? I know I went through a lot before I go into recommendations. Pretty good? Okay. So I'm going to go highlight the, some of the parks, the existing parks. There's some smaller parks that I'm not going to go into detail today, because they're fairly straightforward, and they're in the plan, but I'm going to go to the, highlight some of the key ones. And Carter Park is a really important one that has been underutilized tremendously. And so how can we re-envision Carter Park as a cultural and performances park? It becomes more of a destination. And some of the things that we've talked about is creating an actual amphitheater. It doesn't have to be, you know, heavily built. It can be simply grass, or you can do more cement stairs. But also, it needs things like storage, bathrooms, some lighting areas. And then we can start having programs, both for drama. We can have more of our Shakespeare in the Park, and really activate that place so that it can be used more effectively. Another element is creating some habitat barriers. It can also be dual-use, as sort of a seat wall. So we want to see how this park can really become more central. And I mentioned that connected and accessible. Well, right now, you don't really know Carter Park is there, so how can we create signages and invisibility, so when people walking down Main Street, they see, oh, look at this really beautiful park. So that's important there. Kitty Fernandez is sort of a lost park way up on the street, but it is a huge potential for connector, connecting the one part of downtown to the other side, as well as people who live and on the other side of Main Street. And there's ways we can enhance that. Actually, I've walked a lot on that park, and looking how we can limit and mitigate some of the vehicle traffic in that park, and create some really interesting spaces. And the thing is, how can we make it an art in the park? Might be a way of creating a purpose for it. There's an art school, and art galleries right down there. There's lots of restaurants. Can we have art programs, art classes, but also more art in that park, and also create that sensitive design that makes it a really interesting place to visit, to sit, and to linger. Keough is a tiny little park that, again, is very underutilized. It's in a little corner in a neighborhood, and so how can we make that, again, a really exciting place just for that neighborhood? So we're calling it our neighborhood backyard. And these pictures, I thought they were fantastic, because they're the same size as Keough Park, and they're much, much more interesting. They don't rely on large pieces of equipment. They have topography. They have some things that swirl around, or you can create games. So they're more of a place where anybody could go. It could be a teenager, it could be a toddler. It just creates some more vibrancy to that area. Probably one of the biggest areas of opportunity is around Johnson House. It is outside of the city limits, but it is a large piece of property the city does own, and has some wonderful elements. It has a little train station that is a nice meeting room. It has lots of space. It has restrooms in the lower portion. So we can envision potentially moving the horseshoes from Smith Field to Johnson House with bocce ball, and creating a destination for some of the community members, and potentially enhancing the use of the train station together with that. So it's a really more dynamic place, where people want to go there. You have to make it a destination, because it's not something you can just walk to, but it is a place where you can definitely go as a community. And then I think, interesting signage. There's a whole bunch of mismatched signage, but you don't really know where you are, why you're there, and can we improve that. Another important thing, which is somewhat mundane, but the parking and how you access that really needs to be improved, and creating an opportunity. So we're suggesting doing an entire master plan for this property to understand how all these things can happen, because we have some constraints around wetlands, but lots and lots of opportunities. In the upper area, it is also not as, you know, used, and it's absolutely beautiful. I had some opportunities to go up there on a afternoon, and you can see out to the ocean from up there. And one of the things we heard a lot is there's not a really good place for large group picnics in Half Moon Bay, for the community. And so this would be a fantastic place to add some group picnics. They can be for revenue, so you can actually charge for them. And there's very ample space to create these and also create big views. We also think there's some opportunities to enhance the area around the house itself, potentially adding a gazebo, using it more for weddings, so you could have a reception in the group picnic area, and a ceremony closer to the house. There's a lot of synergies there that may happen. Poplar Beach, there's some very sort of critical elements that just have to happen. There's some erosion that's happening there. There's some challenging aspects of access. So fixing that, making sure that we can get people off the bluffs, having more designated trails, but also creating opportunities for people, if they're handicapped, to have beautiful views, and maybe making them also a place where they might have a ceremony, a wedding, some sort of event, but also some informal activities for your community. And there is, right now, in the process, a, some plans to do some of these improvements. The other really large park is Smith Park, and it's mostly used, as many of you know, is for baseball, Little League, and it's beloved. But it is challenging, because there's other things that can happen there. It gets overcrowded sometimes, and lots of parking that goes down the street. There's a dog park there, which is used really well. We think there's an opportunity, again, to look at a master plan for this, and reorient things to use it much better, to create more dynamic elements. And this lower piece here is just showing how you might integrate both kids' activities. You could have structured areas where people could have snacks to eat and watching baseball practices. Creating a track around the baseball, so people can walk that while there's a game going on. Looking at how we can create maybe a dog park that would be usable as a parking lot during high tournament times, so we can actually, and we've done that in some other areas, where you could just actually take away the fence, and cars can park there just for some event days, and then you can bring it back. Maybe it's a place we can also do some of those informal soccer fields, so we can have some practice fields that the city owns. So we do have some new facilities, although existing parks and getting them up to snuff is probably our primary priority, there are some suggestions for new facilities. And one of them is Magnolia Park, which the city already owns. Right now, it is an open grass space with eucalyptus trees on it. And there's a really great opportunity to make this sort of a nature park. There's this beautiful open space across from it. There's lots of wildlife, and especially hawks that are there. There are butterfly habitats. So how can we enhance that? Well, we think we can create these really beautiful butterfly gardens. We can do a community garden here. Create play areas for children that aren't, again, a structured play area, but maybe like these little willow houses. So when you go there, you learn, you play in the plants, you see and experience more of a nature area, but it becomes a really wonderful community asset as well. This other really important thing, so this is, this is where looking for a potential site is going to be the biggest question, is developing a community park. One of the goals was a place for gathering. Well, we don't really have a central place here in Half Moon Bay, right, for gathering, wherever you can bring your entire family, and somebody can go over there, and somebody can go there. You can have a picnic on the grass, and not have sports as the primary focus, but just, again, as a community space. So a 10-acre or so community park with all informal activities, no organized sports, is really ideal. And so this shows just some ideas of everything, from some turf that you might do, some yoga classes on, or a frisbee game, some play areas, and gathering spaces, again, for all sorts of elements. Going again with the bike and pedestrian plan, we see that you have a lot of linear space in town, and can we identify some places along some of those trails? They could be little recreation spots. Now, they might be simply a table that takes in a view. It could be something like this little nature bridge for kids to experience as their parents are dragging them on that walk, so they can have a spot, like, we want to play here for a moment. Or it can be something like a little exercise area, either moved along a trail or in one particular place. So what we have done is we've identified some key opportunities, and the bike and pedestrian plan is going to carve out where those places might actually be, since they're developing that. The other thing that was mentioned a lot, we were able to go to the youth summit, is a teen park. Right now, that skate park right here is fantastic. One of the things you'll note is it's primarily used by boys. So, and there's, there could be more opportunities to have hangouts for girls and boys, and creating more active spaces. So where can we put that? We're not sure, but it would be really a wonderful amenity here for the town. And we didn't really go into many of the sort of traditional recreation facilities, like gyms and so forth, but we couldn't get away from a community pool, because everyone would chase us. We want a pool, we want a pool, we want a pool. So we had to make sure that a pool was discussed here. Whether it could be indoor or outdoor, we know the feasibility of the cost here is a challenge. Where would we put it? We think it's really more of this sort of play environment. It's not like a big lap pool, like the high school has necessarily, but one, again, of a community nature. It could be an opportunity to partner with the schools, or partner with some other groups, but it is, again, an important element down the road. So here's basically my last section, which is some of the opportunity sites. We looked at a lot of places in Half Moon Bay, as could we potentially have something in the future. You know, I mentioned earlier on, there's environmental constraints. Well, almost all the sites available in town have some kind of constraint environmentally, but some of them are mitigable, are not, are not severe. So we looked at location, where are they located? As I mentioned, if you look up here on the sort of top, the northeast side, there's not as many parks up there, so we wanted to see where can we get those people some service. But, so that was important. Is it big enough? So size mattered. Accessible? Could it serve our needs? I.e., is it flat, or is it really hilly? What were the environmental conditions? Who owns it? So we have lots of parcels here, but they're owned by people that we may or may not be able to purchase that land. So we have lots of parcels here, but they're owned by people that we may or may not be able to purchase that land. And was the intended use something that would be consistent with what we were thinking about? So these are, there's a whole bunch here. I'm not going to go into all of them because there's two that came out and over time and time again have been the ones that we want to talk about. So they're the Podesta site and the Post site. So Podesta site is a large property that is actually owned by a developer. They have about a requirement of around seven acres that, from the development standpoint, should go to parks. So there needs to be a conversation there, and could that be something that works in the right location? As you can see, we put it in that corner right there. Whether or not the developer would agree with what they would want in terms of parkland, I don't know, but that's definitely, location matters. Having it tucked away behind a whole bunch of houses would not serve the role that you guys need. You need to have it much more accessible. So that's why we have it very particularly put in that spot. The other one is the Post site, where the city corp yard currently sits. There seems like there's interest and opportunity there. It's the right size to look at that again as a potential site. Okay, so I lied. There is one last section here, priorities and phasing. So this is definitely open, and this is a challenging one. So what we've done is we've put together, from what we've heard from the community, what we think is the priorities. Opportunity will probably trump any of this. So if there's always sudden an opportunity to put that community park in, that might be raised up. But we know these are the things that we think have to happen in the right order. And part of this, we'll be figuring out with the order of magnitude costs. But since we're looking out from, you know, the next, probably say, 12 months out to maybe 10 years, we have to be pretty careful about what kind of cost we provide you. Because as you know, the economy, contractors, the site location, all those things have major consequences on the cost. So costs are going to be something we'll provide as order of magnitude likely to the staff and for the CIP, but may not actually happen into a plan that's supposed to last for 20 years because those numbers are going to be changing with time. And so we have to really look at that as an independent piece as part of your CIP process. But anyway, so these are the top ones here that we think in the next two years you should attack. One is operations and maintenance. And here we have both the maintenance of the baseline, what do we have to do? And one thing that we'll add into the next section is identifying a dedicated fund to now pay for maintenance ongoing. So that's a really critical one that took it for granted, but it needs to be written out right there. Poplar Beach, we know that that, again, is going underway right now. Oak Avenue Park, so I didn't show you that park today, but one of the things there is it's incredibly underutilized. One of the issues, some of you went on the tour with us, is there's a safety concerns. The community doesn't feel like it's a place they want to go to. So we want to identify how we can work with that neighborhood, look at programming, and some very distinct improvements to enhance that activation there. So there's also an opportunity through the purchase of a land at 5555 Kelly Avenue to see how that might be served in some of these needs. So doing a master plan in the next couple of years on that. And then also on Johnson House, master plan, because we want to look at what can happen there. So if we need to move things from Smith Field or other activities can happen there, we want to be able to shuffle those appropriately. Okay, so then going two to four years. Carter Park, we need to make sure those updates happen. Frenchman's Creek Park, also one that we didn't talk in depth about. It's a really nice park, but upgrading the amenities, some of the seating, some other elements there would be nice and important. Conduct the Johnson House improvements after that two years. Redesign Kehoe Park, we talked about that one, and Kitty Fernandez. Mac Dutra and Ocean View Park, again, are more upgrades and sort of doing sort of that upkeep and enhancing that. It would be great to put some art in certain places, some of that culture, infiltrate that. Then the Smith Field Park master plan. So we get Johnson House set up, then we get the Smith Field going. Then looking for that new community park. Where is, in fact, that site? Can we acquire that, get the funding going, so forth? And then some of the linear park and open space access as well. So working again with the bike and ped. And that might happen over many, many years as a trail is being developed or as a new walkway. That's something that we will make sure gets connected. Then longer term, Magnolia Park, the Smith Field improvements, that building that new community park, and looking at the community pool and doing a feasibility study for that, where it can go. And then there's other ones that if we can, we would love to do this, which is the Gateway Park. Gateway Park is a little place at the end of Main Street, south of town, that has the Half Moon Bay element. There's some potential there for a hotel and development. So there's a lot of uncertainties there, so we're not quite sure how that's going to fit. So that's sort of sitting over here, waiting to see. And somewhat same with this teen park. Can we find spaces? Maybe it comes in with the Ted Akkock Center master plan. That could happen. And then community gardens and bocce ball. Often said, we have identified a number of locations in our existing parks and in future parks where we can incorporate those elements. All right, so last but not least. So what we're going to do, so after tonight, we're going to have a comment plan, a comment period for a month. And that can be done, there's going to be an online form on the website. You can also get directly to everyone here at this table. They'll take whatever you want. And we're going to have that due by January 12th. And that's an order so we can get to the Parks and Recreation Commission, back to you on the 25th, so you can give us the thumbs up to go to City Council. Of course, in interim, we'll incorporate the edits, and we'll be working on those order of magnitude costs so the staff and the Public Works Group are comfortable and that sort of is sussed out. Then we're going to get on the agenda for the City Council in early 2018, and then we'll be back to the Planning Commission as implementation happens. You'll see any new park, of course, will come to you, master plans and so forth, because we want to make sure those align with any planning that you are doing in the future. So that'll be a future effort. And I think that is it.
Well, great. Thank you very much. A lot of information. I appreciate it all. So the way I am going to approach this part of the meeting is we'll, I'll open it up for clarifying questions from the Parks and Rec Commission and then move it over to the Planning Commission. I'll give Chairman Hernandez the opportunity to have the sort of last word. He's been trying to watch online, having some trouble with that, but following along, at least verbally. So we'll give him, there's sometimes a little bit of a pause in terms of his feed, so I'll give him an opportunity to chime in. And then we'll open it up to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to our respective commissions, and that'll be our opportunity to pontificate and give our opinions and that sort of thing. So with that, is there any clarifying questions, technical questions, from the Parks and Rec Commission? Paulette?
The, you know, I was in the Carter Park when you were talking about the, like, you know, an animal barrier, a natural. You didn't have a picture of that, did you?
I don't know. It would have to be, I mean, I don't, it would have to be designed with the particular species in mind and make sure. So what they have to do now at Carter Park is whenever there's any event, they have to put this fencing up to keep the habitat out. So one of the ideas, again, that really has to be sussed out, is to create an actual seat wall that acts as a habitat barrier in perpetuity. So...
And if I'm correct, I imagine either Jimmy or Mike Ferrer could probably correct me, but the species of concern there are probably amphibians. So we're not necessarily talking about sort of large species, that type of thing. So sort of reptiles, yeah, red-legged frog or tiger, something like that. So the barrier doesn't necessarily need to be super obtrusive, just something to keep, minimize everything.
And so part B of Carter Park is that, you know, I think we did discuss a little bit when we were on the tour that that is potentially, you know, a flood, a flooding zone. So you kept that in mind when you were putting together the ideas for the design?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great.
And I think whatever goes in ultimately at any of the parks, there, and this is why, going back to the Planning Commission, there has to be a design, and that design will take in specifics around, is there a wetland issue here? Is there a specific thing here? And making sure that that all follows up to the T. So we're really much at the idea place. So when we say, okay, we're ready to start Carter Park, the city will then say, okay, we're going to do RFP. We'll go through this process and make sure that is very designed and oriented in a way that makes sense. Thank you.
Additional clarifying questions? Steve?
Thank you for the, in the beginning, you mentioned the, when you initiated the table with the goal alignment, you suggested adding a column on financial impact. And I thought your last section of your draft plan was the most interesting about, with the funding mechanisms. Would it be really helpful for all of us is to have visibility as to, is any of this already budgeted? Is this part of any already financial plan? Is any money somewhere pocketed in the city to cover this, this type of, even on the maintenance side? Where do we, what is our shortfall? Because all of these plans are just that, without the ability to execute them. And I thought some of the ideas you mentioned here about funding mechanisms in terms of a bond would be really effective if we had evidence that the plan was being executed. So, in other words, I'm trying to say, trying to get some points on the board. Getting some of these things done, because I think there's some items that are pretty far out, two to four years, start implementation year five. And I know everyone wants instant gratification, and that's not going to happen. I understand that. But ideally, we find opportunities to really show evidence that there's a real strength of will to getting these things done. And then these funding mechanisms really become a reality, I think. So anyway, I look forward to seeing what those financial impacts would be. And because I think that's going to drive when things can get done and prioritization. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, again, of sort of clarifying, technical questions? Jimmy?
Thanks, Brian. So...
Just a second, Rick.
Actually, I had a question. I may have missed it, but I didn't see no reference to the San Mateo County 2001 master trail plan.
Rick is asking about the San Mateo County 2001 Trails Plan.
So the trails are obviously a crossover between both parks planning and our bicycle and pedestrian master planning. And we chose to really focus on trails in the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. So you will see that connection there. And we've been working with our consultant to make sure that trail planning is conforming with what they've been planning.
So Rick, you continue to have the floor. Any other questions?
The only other question I have is, we discussed this previously at the last joint meeting with the Parks and Rec Commission, and it's the question of Smith Field, going back to the whole question of maintenance costs, long-term. I really think we need to study whether or not we're throwing good money after bad with continuing to invest in Smith Field, given the drainage issues and the challenges we have there, and potentially look at relocating the ballpark to a better location that's not going to have the drainage issues, that's going to have, be something that we can really invest in from a community perspective and frankly, maybe not impact some of the wildlife habitat as well. So I really would like to see, I would like to wonder why that's not considered or even mentioned. I know it's something that we discussed during the last joint meeting, and I don't see any mention of it in the documentation here for Smith Field. Can you elaborate on that?
Absolutely. So I think I mentioned a couple of times how constrained your land is here. And it is truly, we looked at every single potential space to find a location for a non-formal sports location, for the community park, and it's very, 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 very difficult. To relocate the sports fields with lights and the traffic that are a part of that, I would say that if that was a priority, you would not likely find a location in Half Moon Bay in the next 10 to 20 years. And I know I'm kind of going on a limb on that, but just from my understanding and time I've spent talking to people on this, those are going to be very, very difficult to relocate. The land just is not readily available. So I think that's where, why that wasn't put on the table. It seems like an impossible barrier from the conversations and elements that we went through and talked about.
I understand the constraint, I guess, and we can take this up during the discussion section, but this is the opportunity to consider it because we're updating the general plan. And this is a time where we have the maximum flexibility for potentially negotiating the change of certain land uses and really looking from a big-picture perspective. So this is our shot for the next 30 years to really do something a little different. The other question I have is, why don't we have a recommendation to add bike racks at every single park? I mean, they're basically, whether our bike racks are enough, I see one recommendation for adding bike racks to one of the parks, but why don't we have that as a recommendation for every single park?
It actually, yeah, I hear you. We haven't culled it out in every place, but in the guidelines, that is actually part and parcel of it. So the amenities. And we're happy to add that. As a biker, I definitely feel like that has to happen. So it is in the guidelines, but we can certainly, if you feel it's important, we can add it to the parks. But it should be in the overarching amenities section.
You'll also see it...
My concern is simply that, and I think you've responded to that well, but we have a general guidelines for people who view these specific things when you look at a table as a punch list. And so we'd like to see, you know, those guidelines, those recommendations called out for each one of the areas. This is what I'd like to see, and we can talk about that during the general discussion.
So through the chair, hi, Chair Hernandez, this is Jill. I just, again, the similar answer to the first one, also because of the way we've split these plans, the Parks Master Plan and the Bike Ped Plan, sometimes these things are going to crop up in one or the other, and they definitely have crossover. So I can tell you that we're showing bicycle parking in every park, as well as shopping centers and all kinds of other key locations that Alta Planning has been working on for the Bike Ped Plan. I think it's good to be interesting when you see this as a Planning Commission with the series of the Bike Ped recommendations. And I'm just sorry that it's a couple of months behind, so I think that will help.
Very good. Thank you for that. Moving on, Commissioner Benjamin.
Okay, thanks. So I have a few clarifying questions. I have a few comments. I usually comment in considerable detail. My comments fit on one page, so that, I think, I want to preface my comments by saying I really enjoyed reading this plan. So that said, I still want to push on areas that feel like I need to poke in. So the first one is the ambiguity that I found in the document as to the definition of a park. Because it's clear that a park is a place where we interact with each other. Sometimes it's outdoors, but we've considered pools and made references to clubs and things that may be indoors as well. And I also noticed that there was an ambiguity with respect to its purpose for the citizens of Half Moon Bay versus its value as an attractor or a facilitator for our visitors in Half Moon Bay. The reason I think that's important for us to talk about is that when we're balancing the parks that we need as a city, we have to consider the entire population. And we are cautioned by the state and the Coastal Act not to treat regional resources as our private park resources. When I look at the list of feasible projects, they feel like they're kind of... I appreciate that we're operating with a hand that we're dealt, right? So I'm not saying that we shouldn't think that way. But I think we have to be sort of Genusian in our thinking, looking from both sides, right? Janus, the god of doors and all that. And, you know, there are parts of town like Sea Haven or Miramar, or, you know, insert your neighborhood here, where when I look at the plan... your neighborhood here, where when I look at the plan, I'm trying to find the opportunity, you know, and maybe we can't prescribe it right now and say, oh, that, that would be a great park right there, but if the opportunity were to present itself as a result of, I don't know, a development proposal, or a landowner decides they want to donate land, that we would like to be able to say, the development of a park in that area is consistent with our Parks Master Plan, right? And at the moment, those kind of developments don't feel like they're consistent with the Parks Master Plan to me yet, and maybe I'm just not reading it well for that. Does that, does my question come across?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, I think these are also great opportunities for all of you to say, this is what we want. So this, this is why I think what you hear is there. So ambiguity about what is a park is part of what this community is. There's a lot of places people might say is a park here that may not be a park in another community. You have pretty limited resources. So linear park acreage in a place, say, like Monterey, that has tons and tons of parkland, seems inappropriate, where here, where we're saying, we need to make sure that those sort of designed parks versus a natural park area, we want to have a certain amount of that design structured park space, and so we want to capture places around the linear parks. So the ambiguity is in part of where we are, the hand that we were dealt. So I think that's there. If you want us to provide a more stringent definition of that, we're open to obviously taking that and putting that into the plan, but it somewhat helps to say, we have a lot of things that we're considering in the park. And then in terms of prescribing on community versus visitor, I think we've, we recognize, and maybe this recognition goes a little bit in the face of the local commission, or coastal commission, which is, there's areas like in these neighborhood parks, Keough Park, for instance, that would never be a community park, where there's places like Carter Park, Mac Dutra, Kitty Fernandez, Johnson House, a new community park, which all would have both residential and visitor community things, so they're kind of at a different level. A lot of the parks that I did the recommendations are ones that may actually have dual purposes for the community. So prescribing one or the other is almost by location and by access, who's going to be doing that. Again, if you want to say something more, more specific, then we should definitely talk about that. And then in terms of the future development, I think that's a really good question, and a good point, and I would love to hear more about that. I think perhaps my biggest concern is the docket that I've put out here, here is a huge amount for where you are as a city, and what you can actually maintain and operate, I think is a major concern. So if you are given a whole bunch of new land by a developer, it may be the gift that keeps on taking. And so you want to be very careful about just adding new parks, because they cost a lot. To actually have them at the level that I know the community wants and the visitor wants, it costs a lot of money. So there is some challenge, that's the two sides, right? It's a benefit, because you get more land, but then you actually have to take care of it. So we should talk about what that might look like and how we can be more helpful down the future.
Okay, so I'll have opinions about that later, but thank you for the answers.
I will hold my comments and questions, and see no other clarifying questions? We'll turn it over, and we'll open up the public hearing. I've got one green card here, two green cards here, I see three green cards. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I've got three green cards and one imaginary green card, so I will open it up with, with Marsha Riley.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate the extensive community outreach that's gone into this process so far. I was able to make the meeting in October, and your write-up has really, very accurately reflected a lot of the comments that went in that day, and I really appreciate that. I'm here representing the Half Moon Bay Dog Park, and so a lot of different things came out in this, but what I was really, really happy to see was your understanding of the importance of maintenance for our parks. It's just something that has really kind of gone by the wayside over the past year or so, and I understand the reasons why, but would really like to see us get back on track on that, and taking from the quote that was in the write-up about improve on what we have, not just do something for the sake of doing something new. I think that's really important for our park and for us to think about this. We are a teeny tiny little park that services, we are the only safe and legal off-leash area on the coast between Pacifica and Santa Cruz. That little teeny tiny patch of land, and we get a lot of visitors, locals, as well as people that we're referred constantly, having people come to us from the Ritz, from the Half Moon Bay Lodge, from Cameron's. So we represent local people as well as visitors in the town. So it's really important that as we go forward, there's a lot of different things that I'd love to see happen. You're talking about perhaps enlarging it, that's something that I had worked very hard on for years, and we were moving in a strong direction, and then again, because of financial concerns, that got waylaid. However it is that we end up going about it, please be sure you keep the stakeholders involved, especially as you move towards a master plan with Smithfield, the horseshoe folks, Little League, as well as the patrons of the Half Moon Bay Dog Park. And we've got, we've laid a lot of ground on this, and again, it was interrupted and what have you, but there's a lot of insight that can come from revisiting that. So with that, I just would like to say again, thank you very much, and please keep us in the loop, and great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, public speaker, Mike Ferrer. Turn it on, is it green? And then sometimes you've got to speak right into-
My voice is usually good enough, but, okay. It is quite a nice, deep report, it shows a lot of work from the committee and from the consultants. I would just like to throw in some history on some of it, not all history is well-written around here. The site that's identified as the county landfill site was shown in green as a potential site. In 1989, there was a battle of initiatives, one put forward by the baseball folks and one put forward by the Arlita Park folks, called the Neighbors Alliance. And one, of course, was for an active recreation on the dump site, once it was remediated, and the other was for passive use only. The active use lost by two to one, the passive use won by two to one, and the first person identifying himself as an environmentalist, Dave Iverson, was elected to the council on the strength of that. And so that's pretty much the voice of the people until the people change it, that that's to be a passive site. There is an agreement that was worked out in the early nineties between the city and the county about what defines passive on that particular site, and the county probably has a record of it. I don't know where we would keep it, but I'm sure it's there somewhere. The, I would also like to comment on Smithfield. I do think that Chair Hernandez is pretty close to correct, in that that is an extremely troubled site, and I think that if you ever moved forward to do something, you're going to have a great deal of unpacking of unpermitted work that's been done there in the last, oh, say, thirty years. And I also noted in the plan that there was, talked about the removal of the bunkers, and I would, I would say that during the Wavecrest Village project, the bunkers were referred to as farmhouses to be removed, and that stirred up the military history organizations who landed on the coastal commission about that, and no removal of those bunkers. So just, that's a bit of history that I just thought I would bring for your reference. And I guess that is a warning, or am I done? I'm done, all right.
Wrap it up real quick.
Okay, I'm not a guy that normally speaks to aesthetics up here, but regarding the Johnson House, I've seen painting after painting, and the impact of the painting is this solitary salt box house on the hill. And so I would have a caution, or give a caution about putting ancillary buildings and stuff around that building, because in a sense, you're losing something if you do that. And the rest of this stuff, I'll comment in writing. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much, Mike. Carrie Burke?
Can I ask a quick question?
We can address that during the commissioner comments.
Good evening, Carrie Burke. I'd like to thank the city, the planning commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, our staff and the consultant for doing such a great job on the Parks Master Plan. It is a critical time, as Chairman Hernandez indicated with our general plan hearings and being able to meld all of our goals for our community. And I would agree that maintenance is so key. It's not the most attractive or fun thing to talk about, but it's essential, because if you can't take care of what you have, it just says something pretty sad and depressing about the state of affairs of a, of a great community. So we really have to do a better job, and I like the idea of really having some budget and some very clear ways of measuring that success in our maintenance of our existing and whatever other proposed development we have, that whether we have to have a special endowment or set fund, so that is going to be key. Also, the bathrooms, which kind of goes right in there, is that, you know, obviously, public restrooms, it's just an essential thing to have, and only in our community, when I travel, I mean, it's always something like, where, you know, where do you find a restroom? So we have to build that into any of our infrastructure and look at that very carefully. And, you know, it really speaks to sustainable design and just thoughtful design. Now on the, very some specifics, I've really been looking at especially on Kitty Fernandez's Park. Now I've done some minor volunteering, I work with people that have done a lot of volunteering in the town on this park, and you know, though you mentioned it was a part, used by the pumpkin festival, I mean, the design elements that are proposed really do not speak to that, and it's just such a critical part of the, a pumpkin festival, that I would hope that any new design would incorporate the fact that we could still have that area available for community events. And the community garden, I don't think that that might be the best place to have a meaningful and a sizable community garden. There might be some better places, you know, to do that. On Smithfield, I just think that there's a lot of opportunity there, and there's chances for partnerships, and it's such a huge resource for our children, that we just have to think out of the box and not just look at it as a problem, but to really say, what can we do better? Can we work with Post? Can we somehow meld, meld in something so that we can ensure that that is available for the youth and for having an active lifestyle? I also think that we're a little bit shortchanging Redondo Beach, because we do still need to use all the connective and the beaches that are really being used now, and we just can't ignore that, that something, even though it's problematic, something really needs to be done. And just finally, it was that, you know, I am a big proponent for an aquatic center, not just a community pool, but that, you know, we're, we're a coastal community, and hopefully, we could have something of that magnitude. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Joe Chamberlain.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Do you remember that commercial?
Is the mic on?
That was a long time ago, yeah. I'm Joe Chamberlain, I'm here this evening to speak for the Coastside Land Trust, and unfortunately, something new has just happened that impacts a significant portion of the area that is south of Poplar Beach, and that is what we know and love as the Seymour Ditch. The Seymour Ditch wants to create a large Arroyo that will eat the city of Half Moon Bay, and when it does that, it will also eat the landfill, which is toxic, and we'll all be in big trouble. So the city's put in a temporary stop on that, but it's temporary, it's not long-term. So we've been meeting with Mayor Ruddock, John Dowdery, and Denise Hutton, I think is your engineer, as well as with Post, the Resource Conserv-, RCD, Resource Conservation District, and San Mateo County, to talk about how to deal with the water that, that goes into Seymour Ditch, a significant amount of water, starting the other side of Magnolia. Magnolia to Seymour and some of the water on the east side of one, that's about forty percent of the water, comes off of the streets into the Seymour Ditch. We're not, that's more challenging than the fifty percent that comes through by the fire station, under the highway, past Cameron's Pub, down to the Dog Park, and then does another square, because it's all channelized. Now historically, that land, starting here's the ocean, is tilted this way, it's tilted back, and that's why Higgins comes down and a Arroyo Leon turns and goes north, is because that tilted up, causing that drainage to go north instead of straight out to the ocean. So it's also slanting down toward Poplar Beach. So we don't have water wanting to leave that area, we have water wanting to stay. So what we did as industrious humans, is we channelized it for agriculture, then we built a ballpark, then we built, you know, other things out there. So now the water has to go quickly in this channel, but it can't, because it's taking out the landfill. So the long-term goal is to slow that water down and to use it for ag or habitat. The first thing we had to do was to check the water quality. Well, it turns out, the water quality is a serious issue. It has a huge amount of bacteria in it, and it also is carrying metals. Now both of those can be dealt with, with different ponds. So working with, this is all just hypothetical so far, they would slow the water down as it comes under Highway One on the other side of Cameron's, that's just, this is hypothetical at this point, and then the Dog, the Dog Park could potentially be moved over to the landfill, because the landfill is almost forty acres, has lots of room for big dogs and little dogs, and where it is now, it's really muddy and it can't be drained. It just can't, because that's the lowest part out there. So these are the things that are coming into play, having to do with Smithfield and the Dog Park and all that land out there. What we envision is, you know, some check dams, some water reservoirs for some ag, and to have a very large, if not permanent, at least, annual wetland on our fifty acres, because that's where the water wants to go. The water used to go through that eucalyptus grove and straight through the landfill, and now you said to the, to the water, you can't go through the landfill. Well, it's trying to go back through the landfill, and we need to stop it. So, thank you. I hope I didn't talk too much.
Very good. I'm assuming staff took notes on that? Feel free, go ahead, just please state your name.
I'm Peter Cruz, a twelve-year resident of Half Moon Bay, and I live at Cypress Cove, and I volunteer with several, several organizations locally, but tonight I have my Cypress Cove hat on. I'm, I've been president of the board for several years, and many of my neighbors have approached me, having heard about the potential for the Post site, and they're very, very concerned about traffic that might be created and the related safety issues, you know, related to the traffic to the park, that might be created there. So they have just asked me to come here and express their concerns, and we have about two hundred fifty people living there. They're also very excited about the potential for Carter Park, to right across the street- related safety issues, you know, related to the traffic to the park that might be created there. So they have just asked me to come here and express their concerns. And we have about 250 people living there. They're also very excited about the potential for Carter Park to right across the street and it would be easily walkable, ride a bike, but who would anyway, walk across the street to Carter Park. So we're all anxious or excited about that part, but they have expressed their concerns about, about traffic going to the Post site. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional comments? I see one more. Feel free.
My name is John Callan. I'm with the San Mateo Land Exchange Company. I also noted that it seemed like Redondo Beach Road was getting a short shrift and that it seemed as though it wasn't being developed to its potential. For years, the county has dreamt of having a park down at near the end on top of the bluffs alongside Redondo Beach Road. It's an opportunity for the city that's long been overlooked. And in the name, in the words of one of the members of the council, it's just a rat's nest down there. It needs to be improved. It needs to be developed. It's been identified as a, as coastal access for more years than I can remember, certainly in the early 70s was identified as coastal access. And that's the heart of the Coastal Commission, right? The Coastal Act is provide access to the coast. So I'd like to see that that's beefed up and it's developed nice and it should be a shining jewel of the city and turned upside down from what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, and we can just sort of start with Paulette.
So I'm going to jump into the priorities and a little bit what Steve said also rings in my ear in terms of the future, in terms of funding, in terms of getting the people of Half Moon Bay excited, to generate an excitement about what we can have here for the residents, for businesses, for visitors. And to me, when it comes to the priorities, the operations and maintenance, absolutely, no question, number one. Poplar Beach, you know, that's already in the works and that is something that is, yes, extremely important. After that, I actually jumped to Carter Park, which I would like to see happen in the first year, forget about two years, I want to see it in the first year because I think Carter Park has that potential that if the city focuses on, you know, doing something with Carter Park, especially because the Parks and Rec Commission has decided that our last concert, which we're not sure exactly, it might be a full-day festival, but our last concert in the park is going to happen in Carter Park in 2018. So this is an opportunity that we start with at least the initial important things for Carter Park that will also help the Shakespeare people with additional electrical outlets and lighting and things just to make it safer. Of course, the maintenance, but that, that goes without saying. And at least get the ball rolling to get people excited, especially if we have a fantastic party there in September with a great, you know, with a great venue where people come and they start to see the real potential of having a park where the community really comes together, has, you know, has a really, a community-building event and an excitement so that when we're proposing other things that may need a bond measure to make it happen, that there's, you know, you start to, it's so important for people to have a vision, to have a feeling towards moving towards something that we want to see happen, that people come together around. And I'd like to see that priority changed to that Carter Park is bumped up to that first two years to make that happen.
Very good. Anything further? You don't have to. Just joking. Thank you very much. Any additional? No comments? Okay, Steve? No? Elaine?
The only thing I have to say is I agree that maintenance is really a key issue. I really like what you said. If you build it and you don't take care of it, you're going to lose it. And the other thing I think that's really important, although I know Smithfield is considered a family park, I think we really need to look into a family park. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Benjamin.
So thank you again. I appreciated the answers to my clarifying questions and I, I do understand what a challenging assignment you have with a city with really disparate needs. I want to thank the speakers who discussed the dog park in particular because I feel it's actually a pretty nuanced need. There are people with dramatically different needs. Some dogs like to socialize with other dogs. Some dogs actually don't like to socialize with other dogs and they need a place to go that's different than the dog park where they socialize with other dogs, right? And so I don't know if a dog park is the right answer, especially since dogs are in lots of parts of the city. And I don't know why we would want to require them to congregate in one location so that they can separate by their, by their uses. I was also thinking about the need for a fire screen on neighborhoods that are adjacent to the state parkland and buffer where vegetation grows up and was thinking, because my dog runs like a rocket, and I was thinking we could just have this linear tunnel running right along the edge or the dogs could just, you know, you'd sign up for a time slot and your dog would just go screaming down the path back and forth until it's exhausted. I don't know, that may be a conflict of interest. I didn't mean any particular place, but you know what I'm trying to say. It's diverse and trying to understand that a little, a little bit more clearly. I did have some, some more serious points. As a planning commissioner, I think my job and the job of my colleagues with respect to this, to think about it, with respect to its interaction with a local coastal program and our general plan, understanding the access for visitors, I think you've pointed out, we're, we're in agreement that there's ambiguity about that. And as we think about how we're going to prioritize and how we're going to fund the various kinds of improvements that we want, that ambiguity is going to crop up frequently. For example, the maintenance of one of the linear parks, in particular the Coastal Trail, has enjoyed a certain amount of funding from some of our regional agencies. Maybe we couldn't expect that in some of our other, other trails. I don't know. But it's certainly something to think about as we, as we think through our, our priorities. We also have to be careful in general planning commission terms about not, not setting the stage for development that might later be perceived as injurious to neighborhoods or property values. That's part of our statutory responsibility at the planning commission. And my sense is that parks in general can be good, but everything is in how they're executed and how they're maintained. That's why I couldn't agree more with the comments of our colleagues on the, on the Parks Commission with respect to maintenance. There were several, several points in reading the document where I felt that there were small inconsistencies and most of them I'll provide in writing to you or Jill so that I don't bore the public with all the details. But I'll point out that when we're editing the document, we want to be careful that our, that we're, that we're delivering a consistent message. For example, on page 23, there's a very nice picture of an informal trail that's running along a bluff top. And that's not consistent with the message that we're trying to control erosion, right? Erosion is everywhere and those things actually make it much worse. The horse trail is another area where I'd like to provide some, some guidance. Horse trails are another type of linear function. But again, where they go into Pillar Cetus Creek, they're promoting erosion. They're having an adverse impact on the habitat. The National Marine Fisheries Service and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and other regulatory agencies have concerns about their impact on water quality. I love horses. Don't get me wrong, I love horses. But when we talk about their impacts, it's not just the, the section that's quoted about whether they're are creating horse poop issues on the beach. It's also can we get them off of the, you know, the Ed Grade crossing into the creek? And in some ways, this is important for the horses' safety themselves. Probably Carrie will remember the story of April back in the 90s. That was a horse that got caught in the mud during the crossing and ultimately that horse had to be euthanized because it couldn't, it suffered hypothermia. So I'd like to see in terms of our linear planning for our horse trails that we address Let's see. I think there was adequate, a good public comment with respect to the challenges in the vicinity of the developed portion of Smithfield. There was also an interesting development that could affect our linear trails in the form of the post-acquisition of the Holstead property that was reported over the last week. And that's a good example of what I was trying to get at when I said I want our plan to be able to allow us to be opportunistic. I want the kind of general framework that in addition to saying, here are specific things that we'd like to do, you know, when the opportunity presents itself for us to pursue an alternative or as Joe Chamberlain mentioned in her comments, when a new urgent safety matter comes up, we have the ability to react and we aren't faced with the question of having to hurdle over a complaint, a justified complaint that our master plan would not be, that a proposed project to exploit that opportunity or address that problem is inconsistent with our Park's master plan. So finding a way to address those is, I think, quite important. Erosion is not just in the places that are mentioned. It's, it's very widespread throughout the town and our network of trails has not heretofore done a good job of addressing those concerns. So I see that in the light of the maintenance concerns that my fellow commissioners on that I have commented on. Erosion gets worse quickly. It's not a problem until it is a problem and then it's suddenly, as Joe has pointed out, a very serious problem. There are lots of places where it's not as serious as Seymour yet. So I hope that we can, we can get on top of that. I'd like to agree with former Mayor Ferrera with respect to the cautions on the Johnson House. It's not that I don't think that additional development is, excuse me, feasible or desirable in that location, but I think it's important for architecture in visually sensitive areas like that to evoke the landscape rather than conflict with the landscape. And the theme of that open field and the space of that salt box house is a worthwhile meme for us to maintain as opposed to having ancillary uses that somehow obstruct it, you know? And I would suggest if we look at the Via Montalvo in Saratoga as an example of a place where there was a creeping development that I think in some ways has obstructed the original sense of the place. So it's not that that isn't a lovely concert venue and a beautiful place to be. I'm not sure that's what we, you know, maybe some people would like that for the Johnson House. It doesn't feel to me like it would be the right, the right match. With respect to the community parks, I appreciated Mr. Cruz's comments. I want to emphasize that whatever development is proposed, whether the community park is there or if it's in some other location where other neighbors might also have concerns about traffic, the circulation impacts of any proposed development would have to come to, through a careful planning process. And significant adverse impacts need to be mitigated. Significant adverse impacts that are not mitigated are, they can be a grounds for denial of the project. So it's important to stay aware of it, but because there's a potential, don't be, please don't be put off by the notion that something might get done there that has a park quality. Let's see. With respect to the list of projects, I just would like to point out, again, I understand we, we have, the cards are dealt, we have access to certain types of land, some we don't. It looked to me like a great majority of the projects that we had listed were south of Highway 92. And I'm trying to figure out if we were to propose a bond measure, why someone in Sea Haven or in Miramar or in some other neighborhood that might say, hey, what we're getting is some kind of less glamorous infrastructure project, why they would say, we're, we're all in for this. I think we want to be careful to spread the amenities in a way that allows neighbors to recreate in place as often as they can. And in the neighborhoods to the north, I don't see that yet. My other comments will be in writing, but thank you again, you know, this should not reduce the fact that this is a really nice document and I hope that this doesn't come off as nitpicky.
If you don't mind, just two quick questions that can go towards your, the comments.
Please.
I would like it if you could, when you review again, to look at the, and there's a section on criteria, and those criteria are designed to help in that opportunistic aspect of kind of a check for the city of when or where they do. So if you don't mind taking a look at that and as well as the guidelines, which are the more framework elements and seeing where there might be tweaks to that to help us make those decisions in opportunistic ways, that would be great. And the other one is on Johnson House. I just want to say I fully agree with the historic significance. And if you look on page 4.19, you'll see that the circle where there would be potential picnic grounds only are actually set far back and the recommendation is actually removing all the existing picnic tables from around the house to actually reestablish that more as the historic space and then moving activity away from that. So I just, one again, take a look at that for people who are concerned there and make sure we definitely want to have that as the, the character in maintaining that, so.
Thank you. Did you, did you have any comments about the dog launching pad?
I like it. As, as long as there's balls involved because my dog would like that.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'm gonna, Commissioner Hernandez says he has some comments. I'm gonna give him the opportunity to speak. So Commissioner Hernandez.
Very good. I'll keep this brief. So I agree with some of the subtleties that Jimmy raised around, you know, having a concrete trail right next to the edge of the coastal trail in terms of visual elements. We need to be more aggressive around trails and a road, the coastal trail, protecting it and then getting vegetation in place. I think that's really critical. With respect to the Johnson House, a very subtle detail, we need a stronger recommendation on Johnson House. We've talked about this in the past, but this should clearly be prioritized as a trailhead and a bike depot. There's a major future project plan with the San Mateo Master Trail Plan and this just needs to be fully integrated. I know folks are thinking about this, but this document should really reference that and it should be a very strong recommendation, not a future consideration. We need a stronger recommendation on improvements to Oak Avenue Park specifically around what can we do for trash mitigation and what can we do for the adjacent property on Jenna Lane? We've talked about a planned trail connection to the, all the way to the coast. That should really be called out in this document with Jenna Lane as the launching point for that trail and future improvements coming along that side as a potential consideration. I, we'll go back to my earlier point. I understand the comments and the response from the city. I still firmly... I still firmly believe we should have a formal recommendation around evaluating Smith Field, a Smith Field relocation, putting those facilities someplace else in the city, including something that's, you know, maybe even part of a residential property that's not under mitigation, but whatever. Just let's have a formal recommendation, let's evaluate it from a long-term perspective. This is a window of opportunities. I would also, back to one of my points, is really considering the virtual as other purposes for the parks being protected. And finally, the last thing I want to close on is I know a lot of work has gone into this document, I really appreciate that work and know there's innovative approach. I really love the concept of the mitigation bank and wonder why it's constrained the San Mateo County. I'm curious about that fact. But I love the concept and think we really need to invest in that as much as we can and those are the bulk of my discussion points.
Very good, thank you. Chair Hernandez, is there any comments from staff or, oh, yes, we do, we did receive some comments from Commissioner DeMond. Scott Phillips, we'll read those in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to summarize, we did get an email from Commissioner DeBon. A few things that he noted was that he liked the idea of focusing on park needs as a cohort, for example, the youth, the teens and other folks in the community. He also likes the idea of focusing on Half Moon Bay constraints and focusing on existing neighborhood, you know, parks that are within existing neighborhoods. He also mentioned the, sort of the larger population of seniors that we have on the south side of Main Street and how it is critical to either create or improve parks along the southern portion of Main Street in close proximity to the seniors within that part of our city, i.e. Kitty Fernandez. Johnston House is too far to walk for many people and that, you know, improving the parking there is critical. Also, a new central park should be no more than a quarter mile away from downtown. And lastly, he did mention how he likes the, you know, the, how tourism, biking, being able to, folks from outside of the community can bike to many of the park developments and serving the visitor-serving. That's all he had.
Great, thank you very much. So with that, I will, yes, absolutely.
All right, so in looking at this even a little further, I tend to be, you know, it's all about practicality. I like long-term, I like having the vision where we want to go, but I also like the low-hanging fruit. And to me, Carter Park is a low-hanging, something that we can actually do something about quickly and also end up impacting a large part of the community. The other one is, and that's why I would, I would change some of these priorities that you have. McDutra Plaza, I call it a plaza, not a park, I can't bring myself to call it a park when it looks the way it does. You know, refreshing that, that is a, that's our showpiece. At this point, that's our showpiece. It's in the middle of the town, it's for the town, it's for visitors, it's for everybody. That's our showpiece and it's not much of a showpiece. So to enhance that, to get that, I think that's a real worthwhile project. And the other thing is Ocean View Park. I would change that one too in terms of priorities because Ocean View Park to me is our children's park. People from all over Half Moon Bay take their kids to Ocean View Park because that's where you've got the playground, you've got the bulk and you've got things for really young kids, middle, middle age, you know, like then you're getting up to the six-year-olds, the seven, eight, nine, 10. Pretty much till about, at least till about maybe 12 years old even, kids enjoy that park. And so to bring in another bathroom, to upgrade that park, because it's also used a lot for birthday parties, and it's something we haven't really discussed that much in this plan, you know, there's no mention of, and it's an important thing for so many families, is to be able to have a birthday in the park so that they have other facilities that they can use and have their, you know, the cake and the whole thing. So to me, the Carter, the Ocean View and McDutra Park Plaza to me should be in, right underneath Poplar Beach as far as the priorities because that I don't see as issues when it comes to land use and all of these other tricky areas that inevitably most of these other plans are going to involve. That's going to be a lot, lot more difficult because of land use issues. So that's my, yeah.
Thank you. So with that, bring it back over to me. So I just want to bring a couple points, a couple things that jumped out at me. Our parks are the coast side, visited by 3.8 million people per year. We have within the coast side region, 30,000 people who live here, but far less, I guess, within the taxable area of the city of Half Moon Bay. And the San Francisco area is projected to grow by over 2.1 million people by 2040. So, you know, Half Moon Bay is going to continue to be a destination, demand is not going to go down, and our parks serve more than the people who live here. So I get really concerned when we start, you know, limiting some of our financing strategies, funding strategies to really just looking at a new bond measure for people here in our town. I think we need to really think about getting creative and thinking about funding solutions that really makes sure that the people who come and visit this community and benefit from our parks are paying into those parks and it's not just the responsibility of the people who live here to fund and pay those. So the Coastal Trail, Poplar Beach, Johnston House, if we build that, Carter Park, if that's a destination for, I would love to see Carter Park be a destination for concerts, that type of thing, but again, that will only really be a successful sort of concert venue if it is visited by people who aren't necessarily of this region. So, you know, I think obviously we want to be welcoming of our visitors and want to do that sort of thing, but we want to make sure that people are paying into our parks here. And I know that's been a challenge other places, Monterey and other places that, you know, we really have to think creatively about how we're making sure that the people who come here and visit these areas are paying into our parks. But I think we need to make sure that we're not just putting the onus on the folks who live here to fund those improvements, that really a big part of the burden and the maintenance and the corrections that are needed on an annual basis comes from folks outside of this area. I don't have a dog, but I do have a four and a six-year-old. So I have a little bit of a dog in the sort of, the interest in parks. I do think that there is a real need for a good quality off-leash dog park. I think that's important because a lot of our important, critical natural areas and other areas around town are off limits to dogs or dogs have to be on leash and, you know, or should be. And if we don't provide those facilities where people can, you know, responsibly take their people, their dogs, dogs off-leash, they will, yeah, I guess that's a debate about who's taking who, but, you know, I think, you know, you need to provide those spaces so people can have, get out and recreate where there's dogs off-leash and then, you know, we can reasonably say that, you know, we want to see other areas protected. I support the aquatic park, I recognize the challenges of making that a reality. But as, as a father of some kids who are, seem to be growing out of the Ocean View Park in, you know, a number of years, you know, thinking about what is going to be their sort of park destination in town, you know, an aquatic park would be nice and certainly we head over the hill often to go do those sorts of things. I also really like the idea of the mitigation bank. I will take some exception to some of the language that was in there and that, you know, it said mitigation banks can be used to support and protect our natural areas. I would really like to see the word restoration added in there. And I think Joe Chamberlain and some of the thoughts that she had earlier about how we manage our stormwater and looking at how we potentially relocate maybe some of our park facilities to accommodate that in a way that we're actually enhancing habitat and we can, you know, utilize those areas where development and other areas, recognizing there's not a whole lot of development in Half Moon Bay, but in other areas of San Mateo County that have similar resource impacts and need to find mitigation credits, can actually invest in not just the, not just the protection and supporting the resources here, but the restoration. I think a lot of our natural areas, they're beloved and we've, you know, there's been many here who fought for a long time to protect those areas. I think as we move forward and as we look at climate change and other things, I think we need to start talking about how we really restore those resources. And with restoration comes the opportunity to incorporate public access and to be able to incorporate some of those other sorts of uses. So I think a good responsible design, restoration design can accommodate, there's co-benefits. So making sure that we're weaving those in there. With regards to the informal sports fields, you know, I was thinking the conversation on how we're coordinating with schools didn't necessarily seem to be in there. Cunha, you know, has a large grassy field out there that is used for informal sports. It's open generally all the time, so I don't know if you've given much thought about how those facilities are kind of incorporated in there or how we're coordinating with the schools. And again, Johnston House, I'd agree with a lot of what's been said here and I've said it before, I think, you know, that can be just a really great hub for providing access to the regional, the broader regional open space network, you know, getting some of the parking off of Main Street that people currently use for bike staging, getting them over to Johnston House, freeing that area up, addresses some safety concerns and just, you know, can create some more synergy around that site. I would love to see just a lot more native plantings, you know, seeing Native Plant Society or, you know, whoever, some, you know, one of those groups sort of adopting that site and really trying to do something, you know, some nice gardens around that area and some other things. So I think Johnston House has a lot of potential. But overall, and kind of getting back to just how do we fund it? I fully agree with the maintenance and the management end of things and how do we pay for that long-term management? It's easy to buy something, it's easy to build something, but it's really hard to maintain it in perpetuity. And ensuring that we have that sustainable, reliable funding source that can go into that. So with that, I mean, I think we really need to think about, I think, I like the idea of public-private partnerships, looking at, you know, where the sort of, the backyard for Silicon Valley, is there an opportunity to partner with some of the tech firms, some of the tech companies to, you know, adopt a park? You know, looking at, looking at some of those types of things and just mentioning and my little plug here, but I guess June 2018 SB 5 State Parks Bond will be on the ballot measure, $4 billion, that will have a pretty significant, a pretty significant pot of money for local agencies. And so looking at how we position ourselves to have resources to match any grant funds for that and have projects that are shovel-ready that those funds can go and invest for, because I'm confident that it's going to pass. So with that, that concludes my comments and I will retain the liberty to submit more in writing as I encourage everybody else to do as this project goes forward. But with that, I will close the joint study session on the draft parks' master plan. Yeah, any closing comments from staff or questions, clarifying questions, direction?
We just want to confirm a couple things and I'm going to run through this. Obviously, maintenance and operation was across the board. The idea of the flexibility component for the plan, I also wanted to note, this plan is a strategic plan. It need not be cemented in the way that our LUP will be for quite a period of time. I would encourage that we maybe improve the narrative in the plan. It connects especially well with our capital improvement program budgeting, which is on a five-year cycle. That would be a little bit long for checking into this plan. I would recommend something more like two, two to three years, but I think that's part of it too. It's a lot easier to update a plan like this than quite a few of the other things you're working on. So we would, you'll see that in the next version if you're comfortable with that. I really enjoyed hearing the concept of a family park and we will think about that when we think about the community park and we're going to improve some narrative on a few things, including the Johnston House. We think we were trying to do what you want, but we didn't explain it well enough, so we'll, we'll do that. Smith Field, I do want to note, I wasn't able to catch Mindy up, I missed the meeting last week that Joe Chamberlain discussed, I was at the first one and obviously they made a lot of progress last Thursday. So we will revise the narrative on Smith Field to include some feasibility assessment in terms of the area as a whole because it's being planned from a water resource management perspective in a bigger picture. You like the mitigation bank, we're happy to hear that. And we will broaden the funding discussion. Oh, this, this one. We appreciated input that we heard from Park and Rec Commissioner Eisen about changing some priorities, the low-hanging fruit of Carter Park in particular, I also, you also mentioned Ocean View Park. No one else mentioned anything. That one seems, Carter Park in particular seems reasonable to us. So unless we hear otherwise from the group as a whole, we didn't hear a discussion, we will go ahead and, you'll see that in the revision. I heard Chair Hernandez mention Beechwood and then I didn't hear the sentence around that and I, I don't know if it was around mitigation bank because that's what we're showing in this draft.
I got his text message right here.
Okay, I'd love to have that detail.
Consider using part of Beechwood as parkland and, and so I would, if Commissioner Hernandez has further thoughts on that, I would suggest, yeah, he provided it in writing.
Okay, okay.
All right, I'll put comments in writing.
Great.
Through the chair. So, yeah, I appreciate the intention of using Beechwood that way, but a careful review of the Beechwood resources is gonna, I'm not saying it's impossible, Rick, but it's going to be a real challenge to make more than a really minimal park application in that area. So I actually walked that with Jill and with a member, with Charzot a while back and, you know, noble intentions, but on the ground, that's a real challenge. I just want to set expectations there.
Everything's a challenge in Half Moon Bay, so.
So other than horses and dogs, we think we got it? Thank you very much.
Okay, so, so very good, thank you all. With that, I guess we can, oh yeah, we do still have, yeah, we're still joint. So we have Planning Director's Report?
Yes, your agenda forecast. So this was your congratulations, your last meeting, I believe for both Commissions of 2017. Thank you for your service this year and thank you for it being in joint sessions a couple times together, we've enjoyed that. For the Planning Commission, your January meetings will include the Chair-Vice Chair election. We are looking to bring the Pullman project back from the last meeting. You may see a project with respect to the Zabala House. And we're hoping to have a notice of preparation scoping session for the environmental impact report that will be prepared for the Hyatt Place proposal on the corner of Main Street and Highway 1. And we have three director hearing items tomorrow, two on Railroad Avenue, new houses, as well as an addition at 216 Valdez. We also have a conforming accessory dwelling unit proposed on Kelly Avenue. No hearing is required, but it is, has been noticed and slated to be approved tomorrow. We approved a sign permit this week for, and we're supposed to, by the way, report these to you, I don't know if they always have been, but we approved a community event sign permit for what has been referred to as the Unity mural. And it will be put forth in McDutra Plaza, I like that too, for the winter holidays, basically in advance of Pesada through New Year's and so you'll see that. And so you'll see that installed, I believe, tomorrow. And that was something that City Council asked for us to take a look at. Now in the future, if there are murals meant to be for much longer-term installation, they would all come to the Planning Commission, just as a matter of clarification. Community event signs need to be less than 100 square feet and there's no discretion about that in the timeline, there's not much discretion. There is discretion about how they're mounted, manner, et cetera, and the material that they're made with, and we took that discretion and we hope that will, we like your feedback, frankly. Let's see. On December 7th, just last Thursday, the B-PAC reviewed revised recommendations on the bike pad plan. They will see a draft plan and there'll be a workshop in February and then we intend to come back to the Planning Commission at that point, either just, just to the Planning Commission or in a joint session with the B-PAC, depending on how that seems to be working out. And I think you'll see some of the missing pieces that you were looking for tonight for the Parks Master Plan. And Measure D was approved with 66 units for this year. The city staff supported the San Mateo County's King Tides and Coffee Event on December 4th. I was there, there were about 70 attendees. It was really excellent because they were able to bring a USGS person in who described everything in ways that the public could understand, that I could understand. It was incredibly helpful and then they walked the shoreline and it was, it was a good public event. It was posted on Nextdoor and this represents the kind of collaboration that we've been trying to have with San Mateo County Midcoast Planning Efforts. So you'll keep seeing things like that where we're working with their staff. Please finish your harassment training, because we have more training for the Planning Commission. In early 2018, we'll be bringing the Conflict of Interest AB 1234 training, as well as some updates on the Brown Act. Heather's not here tonight, your Assistant City Attorney will be supporting us with that. And I also wanted to just put this on your radar, because it's the last meeting of the year here. There's a couple conferences in early 2018. The Planning Commissioners Academy by the League will be April 4th through 6th this year. It will be in Monterey. But the one I wanted to point out is coming up sooner. New Partners for Smart Growth, this is going to be in San Francisco, February 1st through 3rd. I've attended their conferences in the past over the last 15 years and they're excellent. These are the people who put on the Awani Conference and developed the Awani Principles that you may be familiar with. This particular session in San Francisco has eight thematic tracks. One of them is building capacity in small towns and rural communities. So I was, that is often not on agenda, so I just wanted to make a note of it and I'll send links to the Planning Commissioners for that conference. And since it's local and because we do have some budget, we will encourage some of you to think about attending one or two or three days. Thanks.
Very good. So bringing that back, any Planning Commission Communications to report?
Just one. As an individual, not as a commissioner, I attended a, an interesting talk by Peter Douglas at the Committee for Green Foothills last week on the subject of the way the Coastal Act has interacted with development on the coast. It was a well-attended event.
Very good. Chair Hernandez, anything for you?
I'm calling in from Austin, Texas, next to the Lady Bird Park Trails. I recommend everybody in Half Moon Bay to look at those trails. They're amazing. Went on a run there this morning. Absolutely beautiful and stunning and the Philarcedos Trails to the Sea Concept could match or beat that any day of the week. So just something for folks to think about. And I'll make a recommendation to close this meeting when you close the Planning Commission update.
Okay. We've got, we've got another item on there ahead of that, but appreciate your forethought. And just while we're sharing, sharing, you know, our travels, I was, I spent Thanksgiving in Boise and just a really great, really great trail network and trail system in Boise and was really impressed with sort of, yeah, how everything's weaved through there and, yeah, great, great sort of area there. They actually just adopted a Parks and Trails Master Plan that had pretty extensive, pretty extensive feedback on sort of dog management and, you know, all the same issues that we all deal with, so we're not alone. So with that, any Parks and Recreation Commission Communications to report? Seeing none, I will let Chair, oh.
I have a quick one and it's a fun one, but I'd be remiss by not mentioning to everyone how incredibly proud we are of the Half Moon Bay High School Cougars Football Team. They are playing for the state championship Saturday and they won last Saturday at home. 500 temporary bleachers were put in, those were filled with some two extra small bleachers, but that was a community event. And they won the Northern California Championship. Our little guys, 24 players on our team, played against a much bigger team and played beautifully. So I have to mention it because it is a great, great moment for Half Moon Bay, so very proud of those kids.
Well, that's great. Thank you for that. All right. Chair Hernandez, you, you've got it. You can close it.
I'd make a recommendation that we close tonight's meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second? All in favor? Thank you all.
Well done, sir. I hope I was able to avoid quaking enough to cause the table to shake in your presence. Oh, I was kidding on the square. Say again?